Call to order this meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, March 26, 2024, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas at 5:33 PM. Board members present, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Ms. Vicky Morgan, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Crystal Davila, Ms. Paola Gonzalez, and me, Casey Fealan. Board members absent, Mr. Fernandez, I haven't heard anything from him. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Invocation this evening will be given by Ms. Sullivan with the pledges by Mr. Marshall Kendrick.
(inaudible)
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 Bow with me. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the many blessings that you bestow upon us each day. We pray that you would lead and guide and direct us as we just so much for the many excellent educators that guided us, and we pray that you would lead and guide and direct them, be with those that pray that you might open their hearts.
We're going to move on to the public comments according to the policy BED local related to items on the open session portion of the agenda with a 30-minute allotment. Public comments according to policy BED local related to items on the open session portion of the agenda. Individuals who wish to participate during this portion of the meeting shall sign up at least three hours prior to the start of the meeting in person with the board secretary. Moving on. Yeah, it's not up here. Or I can't find it.
They're not here.
Oh, they're not here? Neither one of them? Okay. No worries. We have two speakers. Ms. Robé, are you here? Mr. Valdez, are you here? They signed up for this. Yeah. Going once, going twice. We're going to move on to the policy update presentation by Ms. Sandra Huhn.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm going to go over the policy update from TASB Policy Update 122. If there's no objections, I'm going to go through the policies and then at the end take any questions that you may have. For your convenience, you were provided a notebook, and the policy slide will have the notebook corresponding page number at the bottom if you want to follow on your book. The first policy that we have is a revision to CQB Local concerning technology, resources, and cybersecurity. This policy revision amends existing law related to security breaches, and what it does is it's going to extend the breach notification to breach incidents. And the definition of breach incidents is going to be in policy CQB Legal that we have on our board page. And you'll see the revision there. It's a brief revision under security breach notification, and it makes the change to security incidents as defined by law. Moving on to policy CSA Local Facility Standards Safety and Security. This policy is a policy revision that addresses audits of building access to comply with the Commissioners of Education's new school safety facility rules, and it also addresses provisions in the policy so that we do not discourage any parents from visiting the campus that have verification of their ability to attend. And you'll see the revision there. It's a clean page, and you'll see that there's no red line in that because it is a brand-new The next policy is DC Local. DC Local is a revision to our nepotism policy, and what this policy revision does, it creates a nepotism exception for hiring bus drivers. Previously, only counties that had a lower population were able to make that exception. Now, the board is able to make the exception to any nepotism rules so that we are able to hire bus drivers. And you'll see that also is a minimal revision. If you look under the note, you'll see that there's a citation to DBE Legal. It's a little odd the way they have it set up, but that section is the one that addresses the bus drivers. You'll also see in blue that there's a revision that was made to clarify the authority to hire, and that revision, it's the same that we had, it's just a clarification that TASB recommended where the superintendent has board, the board has delegated authority to the superintendent to employ teachers, which includes facilitators, speech pathologists, school nurses, and librarians, and it clarifies that the board retains final authority for employment of all other contract employees. So they just cleared that up to make it easier to read in our policy. Okay, going on to EH, EH B. This policy is a revision to the special programs, competatory services, and intensive programs. This local policy contains provisions on accelerated instruction, and it has, it will, it has actually been deleted, and so I think I moved ahead. I can't see that one policy. Here we go. So you'll see that actually has been deleted, and it has been moved to EHBCA, which we will be discussing shortly. EHBCA is also a new policy, and this policy is meant to address the needs of students who are at risk of dropping out, are not performing on grade level, or are not meeting performance standards on standardized tests. And what this policy does, it changes the rights of a parent and enhances it to where if you have a student who is under those categories, now the parent can request that they're able to identify a teacher who they would like to be the particular teacher for their student. Used to be only allowed in grades three, five, and eight, but that has been extended to include all grades. So that is a change that was made. It also removes accelerated learning committees, and it substitutes that with an accelerated learning plan, which is a little bit different for students. It also maintains the right of a parent. If they don't agree, they do have appeal rights under F and G. So it does clarify that there are appeal rights for a parent under that section. Moving forward to policy FEA. This is a policy that addresses excuse absences for students to visit professional workplace to explore a career in that particular field. And so that is extended. We do have it in policy where it extends to secondary education for to visit a campus. Now it allows you to go into the workplace where a student will have time to do that. It allows for two days during their junior year and two days during their senior year for the students to be able to do that. Moving on to FFAC. This is a policy that has come in existence as a result of Senate Bill 629, which requires a district to adopt a policy to address maintenance and administration of disposal opioid antagonists. And this is going to have to, this is dealing with the maintenance on the school campuses of the Narcon, and what procedures we're going to use for that, and how that's going to be regulated. So this policy addresses that. There is also in blue, you'll see a provision that addresses the athletic programs and the trainer's ability to administer non-prescription medication if there is permission, and it talks about how that's going to be done. That was something that was not in our policy, and TASB did recommend that we put in there so that the athletic trainers have some guidance on how that can be done. Moving on to policy FFB. This is a process that we do have in place already. It is on our website, but it's a revision for reporting concerning behavior by a student, and it does talk about confidentiality provisions for the student and the employee. Moving on to policy FL Local. This is a revision to the follow-up on the policy that we talked about earlier where the reference to accelerated learning committees has been replaced with references to the accelerated education plan, and this is moved to the F series, which addresses students. So they went ahead and made the change here so that it is consistent with the instruction That concludes all the revisions. Are there any questions?
You've done a great job. I really appreciate the way you worked everything down and explained everything.
Thank you. I'm glad it was easy. I wanted to make sure that it was easy to read. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan has a question.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I have a question on the wellness and health services and medical treatment, and it says the provision shall be applicable to every campus. So how's this going to affect our elementary?
So the, we could have kept it only to sixth through 12th grade, but the district is recommending that we include it on all campuses because we have had concerning incidents on the elementary level. It may not be a student, but it could be a parent or a visitor, and so we do have it on all campuses. Again, that would be something that the board, you know, this is the opportunity for your input if you feel that we just want to keep it on sixth through 12, but we do have enough supply to keep it also on the elementary campuses.
And at the elementary campuses, we have the registered nurses, so they will be the ones to do the.
Yes, we actually have three trained groups of individuals. We have the registered nurse who's trained. We have the administrative principal, and then we also have backup safety, security individuals that have also been trained. So we actually have three different categories of individuals that can administer the Narcon as necessary.
I think that's great.
I do, too.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
I too enjoyed. It was easy to go through the book and pick up the things. Thank you very much.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you. So this appears to be Narcan-specific, or would there be other medications? I know you mentioned that. I mean, I'm just kind of thinking like an EpiPen or things like that. Is that something that's also going to be kept on campuses?
We actually don't keep the EpiPen on campus. That is something that we do keep if a parent brings that in, but we do have health services here to be a little more specific. Bring in the expert here.
It just made me really curious because I'm thinking this is, I mean, it could be a life-saving measure as well, you know?
Yes, and we looked at a lot of data when the asthma rescue med inhaler and the EpiPen came about, those laws came about, where they said we could stock unassigned emergency meds like that as well as the naloxone. And we have determined that we don't see that data. We don't see that need where we had students that if only we could have had an inhaler, if only we had an EpiPen, we could have saved their lives or prevented some sort of massive, you know, event. We just haven't had that. The data speaks for itself on opioid crisis, for sure, in our community and our state. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question when it comes to FL Local. That revision right there sounds a little bit redundant. Can y'all explain to me the difference between accelerated learning committee and education plan?
Yes, we have a, I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Local. So prior to this year, we would have to have an actual meeting with the parent and school officials and a district-level official if a student fell into this category, and this is changing that to where we just have to have a plan. Of course, we communicate it to the parent, and we keep it on the student record from then on, so we don't have to have the actual meeting.
So it makes it more efficient?
It does make it more efficient, and of course, it gives, she talked about, the parent has the, you know, the right to appeal it, and of course, our campuses are in communication with the, with the parents. It just doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have the actual meeting. We've had, we had lots of meetings last year.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sandra. Appreciate it. And move on to the budget workshop with Mr. Ben Poppy.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. We're in trouble up here.
I know what you're saying.
I may not find my notes, but I'll just speak from the heart here. So, board members, we've been working on budget for some time. Of course, we have definitely talked about this, not only at the district level, but we've also talked about it with the campus principals and department leaders as well. Each board member should have a budget in front of you, so hopefully you've had that at your spot. As you recall, the state had a $33 billion, let me just say that again so everyone hears it for the seats in the back, a $33 billion surplus that they decided to hold back from public schools because they were in hopes, or certain legislature were in hopes of getting vouchers passed. And sadly, they have made a lot of profit off that money sitting there and not in the hands of public schools and being used for our children here in the state of Texas. And at the same time, they appropriated an $18 billion property tax relief, which is really good for our taxpayers, but again, there's an impact to our public schools. So while all that is going on, we're trying to build a budget that still meets the needs of our students and our families, the programs we've become accustomed to, and our students are excelling at. We're trying to make all that happen. So like I have told you all before, we're trying to turn over every rock of possible revenue, but also cost savings, and I've been calling it cost avoidance with our people because they get tired of hearing the word cut, 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 because they're working as hard as they can and as smart as they can, and those words keep getting pushed around because of the situation that we're in. So any new dollars, curriculum, instructional material, school safety, we've had very little discretion. A lot of it's been grant-oriented, where we have to apply for it and follow a certain step in order to receive those funds. So again, it can't just be put here or there or spent on this or that. In January of '24, we of course talked about not only those impacts, the tax decrease, the fact that we were getting no new funding, even though inflation, we have not received any new funding since 2019. And you can just imagine, you look at property insurance and what that has done in our district. You look at cost of fuel for our buses to run, of course, electricity, and just all of the day-in, day-out costs that are associated with that. And then, of course, the generous board that we have gave a 3% raise to all employees last year out of our fund balance, and none of that was funded by the state as well. So even though we're doing really well in our revenue collections, we have issues. And so the budget you see in front of you that we're still working on showed us a $37 million deficit, and I know that doesn't feel well. That's even with reduction of staff, a $10 million reduction of staff through attrition. That does not show a salary increase. So again, we were using ESER money to keep those class sizes down. We were using ESER funds to make sure we were filling the gaps that kids experienced from ESER. We also, during that time, were unfortunate and were hit by tornado. So we're going to talk to you tonight. Mr. Poppy's going to explain how we levy disaster pennies and what we can do in that area. The committee, again, has looked at every cost avoidance measure and every possible revenue source that we can, and we'll continue to talk about those. Mr. Poppy's going to talk about some big ones tonight with you. But when we lose state revenue and we, of course, decrease our tax base and decline student enrollment because of the tornado or the charter schools that are being approved in our area, or whatever the reason, it is impacting our bottom line. So we use the, of course, state template that's provided by Omar Garcia, and this is where you see the $37 million deficit. Expenses, of course, we've looked at what we can do to zero out our budgets and have our departments build their budgets from scratch. We've reduced campus budgets, none, but we have reduced department budgets by 3%. So again, there's lots of opportunities that we have to answer questions tonight, share information with you tonight. I know you've got in front of you some TASBO information as well as some information from the state about budgets in general, but I'm going to let Mr. Poppy take it from here, and then we'll answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, President Fealan, Board of Trustees, Dr. Powell. Thanks for that great insightful overview, Dr. Powell. We'll continue to discuss, this is the initial workshop for Budget 2425. As typical, the budget continues to move, and we adjust and identify needs that the district and staff have, and specifically the students of PISD. Like Dr. Powell said, each of you have packets, nine pages. The first three pages are different budget summaries. The first one shows no pay raises, $37 million budget deficit. And then what Dr. Powell talked about is we do, from the tornado last January, we are able to levy some additional disaster pennies in response to that. So we can do just over one cent of disaster pennies, 1.22. So on page two, you'll see that that will decrease the budget deficit to 34 million. And then the third budget summary is if we levy the 1.22 disaster pennies, and we actually look at changing our fiscal year from September 1st to July 1st, and the timing of that would allow us to have the same amount of 12 months of revenue, but only 10 months of expenditures. So that would actually modify the budget to where it's a surplus of $8 million. So we're trying to explore every option that we have for the 2425 budget. And like Dr. Powell talked about, the most districts in the state are dealing with this as the ESER funds expire September 30th. So we have the big amount of salary that's coming from ESER funds into the general operating budget, and so we are looking at through attrition, right sizing, staffing. And if you go to page six of your handout, four and five, Dr. Powell pretty much talked about, you'll see the last couple of years that we've came to the board and we have adopted a budget deficit, but by the end of the fiscal year, we end up with a budget surplus. A lot of that is just conservative estimates on revenue projections, being realistic on expenditures, and then having vacancies when we don't be able to hire as fast as we can, or there's just a teacher shortage.
Unspent payroll.
And then moving to the next slide, talk a little bit more about the disaster pennies. So we are working with our delinquent tax attorney, Purdue, and we're working with TEA to see if we can levy additional disaster pennies, not just the 1.22 cents, but we think we can go back and get 4.22 disaster pennies. But we're going to work with TEA to make sure that our interpretation and understanding is what they would actually do if we were to come back to the board and adopt a tax rate with 4.22 disaster pennies in August. And at the very bottom of Slide 7, you'll see various districts, surrounding districts in the Region 4 Houston area that have levied disaster pennies in the last five years. So LaPort ISD, Pearland ISD, Cypress Fairbanks ISD, and Klein ISD. Page seven, and they're numbered at the bottom right, but the PowerPoint has a little graphic to it.
Oh, I see it now.
Yeah. Okay. It's kind of halfway hidden there. And I'm going to go to Slide 8, that's titled "One-Time Pay Stipend Cost." And this is just different options for one-time payment stipend for 2425. And so we provided four different options to look at and the total cost it would, it would cost. So for $1,250 stipend for all employees is 11.7 million is the total cost, and then various amounts, 1,000 for teachers and 500 for all other staff would be 6.7 million, 500 for all staff is 4.7 million, and 500 for teachers and 250 for all other staff is 3.4 million. We wanted to at least bring that to you and give you different options that we're exploring. And then moving to Slide 9, it's just a budget calendar, and it just goes over the remaining things that are coming up. So the biggest thing is the certified estimate values that we'll receive on April 30th from the appraisal district. We'll continue to come back to the board with budget workshops and give you updates. And then on July 25th, we'll receive certified appraisal roll or estimates from Harris County Appraisal District, and then we'll publish the notice in the newspaper, and we'll come back to the board in late August for adoption. Then we are working with Mo Kasey and Associates and TEA about trying to see if we can use a different value for state funding, which would allow us to get about $2.4 million in additional revenue in 2425. So hopefully, we can work with them and find something out in the next couple of months. Then also, we are exploring the possibility of a fiscal change, of a fiscal year change. The major advantages is it would align with federal programs. It would align, it would help the program coordinators that would no longer be required to maintain grant records in two fiscal years for most federal funds. And if we do go this route, we would have some adjustments on the budget side because we'd be budgeting with more estimates for revenue since we won't have the certified appraisal rolls. So there's a little bit of impact on how we budget. Well, we would go to where it would align with the school year. So the beginning of the fiscal year would move to July 1st, so when principals and staff come back, then they're already in the new budget year instead of trying to figure out how much funding they have through August and then wait for the new budget year in
Any other problems or anything that could come up from making that switch?
I haven't seen anything other than just estimating on budget and a little bit of effect on PMS reporting that first year, but after that first transition year, everything's in line, and it's easier, it seems like, on the operations side and on the business side. But I've talked to multiple districts that have done it, and everything's been very well. Nothing's been negative from them so far.
Texas School District and the state.
Yes, there's a lot less.
Now that Avon got his four or five new guys in there, I guess I'll go to voucher.
True.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mark.
Saying after the primaries, that primaries results would probably lead to vouchers, and that'll be another issue that we'll have to face down the road.
Right. Until that happens, do you see any chance of them freezing?
No, I don't see any hope of unfreezing funds this year. Next year in a new legislative session, I do see they're going to have to. I mean, there's too many districts, as you know, you've heard from surrounding districts that are suffering. There's too many across the state, but I don't know what that'll look like. I kind of doubt that it'll be as significant as it was at the beginning of this legislative session when they said, here's all this money, take it, and give us vouchers and move on down the road, and we said, no, 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 we don't want to open the door to vouchers. I doubt we'll see that type of conversation. So we stood strong in protection of public ed, and we're going to face whatever we face in the new legislative session. But this year, I don't think there's a school district or a CFO in the land that thinks they're going to be handed any. they're going to be handed any money. Now, in grants, there's some safety grants that Derek and Olivia are applying for, and there's some grants in CNI that we'll be seriously taking a look at. There was a cybersecurity grant that we've applied for. In the world of grants, again, restricted money, tell you how to spend it, where to spend it, yes, we are taking advantage of those, and we'll continue to take advantage of those.
Well, you know, even though this board has worked hard with our legislature to express our desires for not having vouchers, Marshall and I recently went to an event, and one of our representatives were there, and he did everything he could to turn his face to keep from having to look at us or speak to us. So, they know the feelings of the community, but they're trying to please the governor as my feelings on it.
And like Dr. Powell said, any money they're giving us, it's being restricted through grants at this time.
To me, it looks like these guys, including the governor, are looking for, about at one point in time, the next time election comes up, start cutting off funds from schools and giving it to independent financiers that have private schools, that don't have the requirements we do. Turnover.
I hope so.
A lot of turnover.
Same here.
And like Dr. Powell said, we're turning over every rock to look for any additional revenue, any cost avoidance we can do.
You know, you are. And I appreciate all that's taken to do that.
We appreciate all your work, excuse me, Ben. I know you've been very diligent, and as has the people. We greatly appreciate it, and it is something every board member is very conscious.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll be back in a month, give you more updates, and hopefully have more information, so.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
We're going to adjourn to close session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints of charges against a public officer or employee unless the individual who is the subject of the deliberation or hearing requests a public hearing concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendation to hire administrative personnel and/or superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071 to consult with district attorneys concerning matters in which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorneys about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. 551.074 for the purpose of considering matters related to the superintendent's evaluation, superintendent's contract, and related actions. We will reconvene in open session as quickly as possible.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Kendrick.
Ben, let me ask you a question. Do you have any estimate yet as to end of the school year 2020, '23, '24 about the fund balance?
So, we've done preliminary estimates. It's pretty early, but with the use of ESER funds, we don't see a big surplus or deficit. So, we expect it to be flat. We don't think we'll pull a large amount from fund balance, and we don't think we'll bank a lot.
So, you think it'll still be at the 2023, '24 level?
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, and I do have a couple of things that Dr. McCain would like to bring up. We have time.
Sorry about that. That's my fault. Come on up. You could have done it maybe in executive sense, it's employment and HR, but we're going to let you go now.
Okay.
So, just some strategies. HR, it's all part of a team effort, just some strategies that we're looking at cost avoidance, and so we wanted to make you aware of two in her world. So, go ahead, Dr. McCain.
Okay. Thank you. So, two ways, two things. One thing, one way would be to reduce the amount of salary that we pay our classroom facilitators. Currently, we pay them at the rate of our first-year teachers. And so, we pay them at $62,456. We want to reduce that to $55,000, and that would be another way for us to cost, save money, and also help us to be able to support. We've had, we've had a large number of them not be able, not be successful in completing their requirements for certification. So, we would want them to, we would want to be able to support them, structure the process to where we could work with them, and so it would serve twofold as a savings and also for us to get more teachers who want to become certified. The second way is, we have a lot of people who work 200 days or more, and we've had questions about, could they work less days? And so, surveying all of our employees who work 200 days or more to see if they would want to move to lesser days, or maybe, you know, wanting to spend more time with their families, or for other reasons for not working year-round, and that would be another cost savings.
So, some districts have gone to mandating less days. We're looking at surveying those that are interested. We've had people come forward and offer that as a budget solution. And then when she talks about non-certified classroom facilitators, tell them how many we have currently in the district.
We currently have 277.
Multiply that by the savings of the salary. We compare ourselves to other districts. We would still be paying above the average of what classroom facilitators or non-certified teachers, so I don't think we'd lose those people, but it sure would incentivize them getting their testing requirements taken care of to move up to that first-year teacher salary.
Right.
So, we would support them through the RISE program, through mentoring, and other ways to make sure we're supporting them getting those credentials by testing and hopefully passing successfully.
Right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We stand adjourned. Reconvene in open session at 7:06 PM. Is that loud enough?
That's good.
Yes, ma'am. We're going to move to special recognition.
Well, board members, we're excited tonight. We've got several special recognitions that we want to present to you. First of all, I'm going to bring up Michael Holt, our Director of Fine Arts, who will recognize two of our All-State Choir students and their directors. So, take it away.
Good evening. I want to thank Dr. Powell, Superintendent, and President Phelan, and school board members for allowing me to introduce and recognize our All-State students tonight, their families, directors, and administrators. Before we begin, I want to give you a heartfelt thanks to sincerely thank each of you school board members for all the support you give our Fine Arts Department, from financial support to your amazing leadership and policy, to your attendance at all of our events, from Big Art Day the other night, to Elementary Music Festival, to concerts, to football games, to all those things. I just greatly appreciate it. I can't thank you enough. Okay, so, here we go. So, this year, over 70,000 high school students entered the auditions vying for the honor to be Texas All-State musicians. That's 2% of the students who auditioned became All-State musicians. It's a pretty elite group that our students are in. We are so proud of these students, these two students' accomplishment, and they have reached the highest level that a high school choir member can make as a high school student. So, first up, we have Ms. Joy Minahan. She is a junior at Doby High School and a current three-year All-State student. So, this is her third year in a row as a junior to make the All-State group. She is recognized for academic excellence, a member of Student Council, National Honor Society, and of course, an enthusiastic member of the J. Frank Doby High School Varsity Choir. Driven by endless amounts of passion, she plans on taking her love for music seriously by majoring in music and the music field, and eventually spreading her music talent wherever she goes. Joy Minahan. Next, Mr. Kevin Alvaringa. Kevin is also a junior at Doby High School and a baritone in the Doby Varsity Choir. He also participates as a core member of the J.F. Singer Show Choir and is currently taking AP Music Theory. While his other interests include Doby Soccer and Key Club, after high school, he plans to include pursuing a vocal performance major at the University of Houston's Moore School of Music. Very good. So, I would like to take a second and ask the following people to please stand and be recognized, Joy and Kevin's family. I know they're here. Choir Director, Mr. Tyler Ruberg. Where's Tyler? In the back. And Assistant Principal for Fine Arts, Mr. Luis Cannon. Thank you so much.
Awesome. We are so very proud of both of you and for all the amazing things that go on in our Fine Arts Department. We also tonight want to recognize some of our business office individuals and team members. TASBO Purchasing Award is the first one, Award of Merit from the TASBO Excellence in Financial Management, and ASBO Meritorious Budget Award. This is the seventh year that our purchasing department was awarded this, the TASBO Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations from TASBO, and it was created in 2009 to recognize school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and education service centers that are committed to following professional standards in the acquisition of goods and services. Texas school districts face, as we all know, an ever-increasing pressure to use funds efficiently, and we're proud of the work that our purchasing department does each and every day. They help us to streamline operations, comply with regulations, and set the standard for how to utilize taxpayer dollars, and I'll just promise you, they go above and beyond. I witness that on an ongoing basis. TASBO's Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations was presented to PISD during the annual TASBO Conference on February 21st, 2024, and the award was given to only 77 school districts out of the roughly over 1,000 in the entire district. So, we'd like to recognize the entire purchasing staff for their hard work, so come on down.
So proud of you guys. You're awesome.
They are amazing.
Congratulations, Derek. Proud of you.
Picture. Derek, you get the box.
Congratulations, and thank you for all you do. Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Well, let them get a picture, and we're not done yet. We've got more awards. The Business Services Department, this is the third consecutive year for our Business Office Department to be awarded the TASBO Award of Excellence in Financial Management for Business Office Operations. The Texas Association of School Business Officials, or TASBO, created this award in 2020 to recognize those school district, open enrollment charters, education service centers that have implemented professional standards, best practices, and innovations in financial reporting. The criteria to qualify for this award is stringent, based on Financial Accounting and Reporting Guidelines identified by the TEA Financial Accountability System Resource Guide, and now it says FASRG, so I'm not even going to try to say that. Applicants must submit documents across 11 key areas, which are reviewed by TASBO Accounting Subcommittee. TASBO's Award of Excellence in Financial Management for Financial Reporting was presented to Pasadena ISD during the annual TASBO Conference on February 21st, 2024, and once again, the award was only given to 32 school districts out of the roughly over 1,000 in the entire state. So, come forward, business service staff, so we can recognize you for your hard work.
So proud of you, Ben. Congratulations. It's great to see you. Tell your folks hello. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations, and thank you again, and thank you again. Congratulations.
They are. All right, so we're not done yet. Budget Department, this is the 15th year for our Budget Department to be awarded the ASBO Meritorious Budget Award. Participation in the Association of School Business Officials, or ASBO, award demonstrates PISD's commitment to transparent financial stewardship of public funds and continuous improvement of the district's annual budget and annual comprehensive financial reports. This award reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting transparency. The PISD Annual Budget Book is an excellent tool that can be used for financial planning and communication devices for internal and external stakeholders. So, please come forward, the entire business services staff, and their hard work in representing PISD in all three awards. We're very, very, very proud of you.
So, after 15 years, why don't they just call it the PISD Business Award? You know what I'm saying?
Ben, good job. Congratulations again.
I'd say to Dr. Powell, since 15 years in a row, they might as well just rename it PISD Budget Award. Why not?
One more picture for honoring this amazing group. Well, we are very, very proud of the Budget Department, the Purchasing Department, all of our business services, and how they support and help our campuses, and because of that help and support, our campuses are amazing and get to do amazing things as well. So, we're going to recognize some of them. I'm going to bring forward Dr. Billy Pringle. He's the Deputy Director of the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals. So, Dr. Pringle, if you'll come up, I think you have some exciting announcements for us.
Okay, it's not going to cooperate. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Superintendent Powell, President Phelan, all the board members for allowing me to be here with you this evening, to give special recognition to some very special campuses in Pasadena ISD. Again, I'm Billy Pringle, Deputy Executive Director for TASSP. I was the former State Director for Schools to Watch. Letty Munchaka is our current State Director, and she's had some recent health issues that kept her from being here this evening, so I'm here on her behalf. But first, I want to give just a little background on the Schools to Watch program. I think it's important to understand the purpose of this outstanding program. In the mid-'90s, a group of K-12 and higher ed educators gathered together to map out real-world guidance for middle-grade schools on ways to support the whole child during the young adolescent stage of development. The middle-school movement, with its focus on student social and emotional well-being, had started to lose steam in the national education conversation. Indeed, the group was concerned that the unique needs of middle-grade students were no longer being addressed in an organized way at the district, state, and national levels. The group decided to focus on producing an evidence-based framework that would provide schools with practical guidance on what elements should be present in a thriving middle-grade school. The resulting Schools to Watch rubric was finalized in 2002. Since then, thousands of schools across the country have used the rubric to measure their school's level of effectiveness in the areas of social equity, developmental responsiveness, academic excellence, and innovative systems. And then in 1997, the group formed the nonprofit National Forum. In '99, the organization debuted its Schools to Watch program, which leveraged the Schools to Watch rubric to identify exceptional middle-grade schools that serve all students well and are on a trajectory toward excellence. The program's usefulness and ability to motivate staff to continue to grow appealed to schools, and the number of states and participating schools grew steadily. While each state has its own process for identifying and celebrating schools, all states align when it comes to the core Schools to Watch requirements. Today, there are over 600 Schools to Watch in 17 states, with more being added each year. In Texas, there are approximately 70 campuses that currently hold the distinction of being a School to Watch. In Pasadena ISD, emphasis on Pasadena ISD, there are 10 School to Watch campuses. So, this speaks to the strength of this district. I want to thank you for your support of the program, for recognizing the power of what being a School to Watch campus means. I'd put this school district up against any other district in Texas, but in the U.S. as well. Congratulations. And so, it's now time to honor the three campuses who have earned new designation and redesignation as a School to Watch this school year. First, I want to recognize a newly designated campus and ask their outstanding principal, Christina Serna, to please come forward. And you have some staff members, too. Principal Serna, congratulations to your campus, Parkview Intermediate School, for being designated as a School to Watch in 2024. being designated as a School to Watch in 2024.
So proud of you. Proud of y'all. Y'all are awesome.
Congratulations. 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 It's great to see you.
Not allowed. Thanks. Whatever. And there goes your evaluation. No nothing.
So, the unique thing about the program is, schools, to keep the distinction, have to redesignate every three years, so they go through the process. It's continual improvement, and the next campus has gone through their first redesignation successfully. First designated in 2021, and now in 2024. Principal Renika Lee, if you'd please come forward. Congratulations to Elmer G. Bondy Intermediate School for their first redesignation as a Texas School to Watch.
Awesome job. Awesome.
Congratulations. Y'all are great.
Happy for you. Congratulations. How you doing? Congratulations. 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 Happy for you. Congratulations. Thank you.
We had a celebration event this afternoon to recognize a campus that was first designated as a School to Watch in Texas in 2014, and they've now earned their third redesignation status. And a great leader at this campus, Principal Dan Eble, if you'll come forward. Congratulations to Keller Middle School for earning their third redesignation.
I know this school.
Yes. Good job, Dan.
There you go. Thank you for allowing this time for me to be here. On behalf of TASSP, we want to congratulate these campuses, but also Pasadena ISD for the great things that continue to happen at these model campuses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pringle.
Thank you.
For all your support of public schools and recognizing what great schools look like. We really appreciate it. We're proud to show off, right?
Absolutely.
Thank y'all for your hard work as well.
Going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila?
Morgan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Morgan?
That's okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval, sir? Oh, yeah. You don't have to stay here, but if you would like to leave, I'm like, hey, let's go. You're more than welcome to leave. Thank you very much for everybody coming. We appreciate it. I'm like, let's go. Just want to keep y'all around. Y'all keep me on my toes. What would I do without y'all?
That's just my shirt. That's right.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Personnel section. Consideration possible approval of administrative personnel.
I move.
Motion by Ms...
None.
There's not any, so, okay. We don't even have to vote on it.
Shouldn't have been on there.
Okay.
I do have one comment I want to make on the Personnel section, on the retirements. As you look at those retirements, we thank each one of these for their dedication to education and certainly to PISD. As I was looking at it, when I was going over my board book, this represents 348 years in education. We really owe a debt of gratitude to each of these who are retiring. I want to thank them personally.
for the 2023-2024 school year.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms...
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
So, board members, as we're looking at cost savings, we're looking at how we can get more done, more efficiently. We're having to add some responsibilities for some, and then, of course, consolidate through attrition some other positions. So this is a savings overall.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the Certified Personnel for 2023-2024 School Year, for information only. Support Personnel for the 2023-2024 School Year, also for information only. Which brings us to the Educational Section. Consideration possible approval of a resolution to the Texas Association of School Boards for the nomination of Dr. Deanne Powell as Superintendent of the Year. Motion by Ms...
We all want a second.
We kind of like her. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
There's no doubt she's the best superintendent. We just got to get her up there.
Crossed the line. I'll do my best, I promise. I'll represent well.
And I wanted to add, the representation of these schools we owe to the leadership of Dr. Powell. She's done a fantastic job in our district.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate it. This resolution is just a small token of the appreciation.
Definitely a team effort, and we're proud of all our teams. You know, campuses and departments, we're blessed. We're blessed. That's all I can say.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of authorizing Donna Summers to act as the superintendent's primary request approver-designee for the approving staff request, also referred to as submitting request to TEA for access to one or more TEA web applications accessed through the Texas Education Agency's login system, TEAL. This authorization is valid from May 1st, 2024 to April 30th, 2025.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of instructional material adoption selected for the Science K-12 Technology Application K-8 Personal Financial Literacy Economics and several career technical education courses in the amount of $1,713,135.42.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the Texas Workforce Commission Camp Code Grant Program.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for Pasadena Memorial High School and J. Frank Dobie High School to travel to Bloomington, Illinois on June 22nd through the 29th, 2024, to attend the National Thespian Competition and Festival.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for the J. Frank Dobie High School Speech Debate Qualifying Team members to travel to two national championship events. The NIE TOC, National Individual Event Tournament of Champions, and NSDA, National Speech and Debate Association Championship.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for the Sam Rayburn High School Texan Battalion Army JROTC Leadership Team to travel to Washington, D.C., 16 through 20 June 2024, to compete in the Joint Leadership and Academic Bowl JLAB Championship.
Don't move. Second.
Second, Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan.
I believe those individuals are here with us.
We get y'all to stand up? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank y'all very much. Y'all represent us well.
Yes.
They always do. Thank you. If you want to sneak out, you could sneak out. We won't say anything.
Student achievement's in the book.
Okay, and we have an extensive student achievement for information only. We have a large amount, which we're always proud of. Which brings us to the Policy Selections, Policy Section.
I know. I move that we approve the Policy Section.
So, second.
Consideration possible revision of the EHBC Local Special Programs, Compensatory Service, and Intensive Programs. Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
The board can't take action.
Motion for all 10?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All 10? Like that. Move on to the Financial Section. Ben, more of that.
I move... Are you saying the Financial Section?
Yeah. Consideration possible approval of budget amendments for February 2024.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Operations Section. Consideration possible approval of a construction contract with Gary Mechanical LP for the 2022 Bond HVAC BAS Replacement BMCS Group II Project in the amount of $1,972,57. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a Geotechnical Engineering Service Agreement to TerraCon Consultants, Inc., for the 2022 Bond Program New Williams Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $32,800.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible, consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 01, for the 2022 Bond Parking Lot Lighting Upgrades LED Package I, project in the amount of $42,428.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The $675,742, that's for all of the schools that are listed?
Okay, I'm on a different item. What number?
Okay, thank you.
Is that the one?
Can you come up, Kevin? So I think there were some additional poles that this is actually specifying. So she's talking about the original amount of the bond in the body of the... So if you want to just explain this one.
I think the contract, the original contract is for the $675,000.
Yeah, the original contract...
Are we going to bring back each one, each school individually?
No. If that's listed in there, that was a mistake, because that was approved back in July. That was just back up to this AEA.
So on July, the 675 was approved. However, we had to bring this back because we needed eight poles replaced at Morales, which were not part of that original contract. So this is just in addition to...
So any additional, then, you're going to bring back individually, like this?
Yes, if there's a need for a change.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 01, for the 2022 Bond Parking Lot Lighting Upgrades LED Package II project in the amount of $37,571.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan.
The same thing as the previous page. Any additions you'll bring back?
Yes, we needed seven at Turner replaced.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of change order Number 006 for the new administration building replacement project in the amount of $215,782.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of surveying services agreement with Westbelt Surveying, Inc., for the new softball complex project in the amount of $34,100.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Construction updates are for information only, which brings us to the Miscellaneous Section. Public comments according to BED Local related to topics not listed on the agenda. There's 30-minute allotment. We have two speakers, Ms. Yan Rabe and Mr. Edward Valdez. Ms. Davila, will you keep time for me, please? This portion of the public comment is listed to this, limited to the speakers who are addressing items not listed on the open session portion of the agenda for this meeting. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar, vulgar language. Complaints about an individual student and/or employee should seek resolution through the district's grievance process outlined in the applicable Pasadena ISD Board Policy DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others and, in so doing, refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comments portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. This admonishment goes for positive or negative remarks. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Ms. Davila will keep track of the time and indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. Ms. Rabe, you want to go first?
Good evening, board members, and superintendents, and administrators, and parents. My name is Yan Rabe. I am a teacher and a taxpayer in the district and the Houston Area Chapter Leader of Start School Later. When you woke up this morning, how did you feel? Were you waking up in the dark? Because now with daylight savings time, you know, with springing forward one hour, we get, in the evening, we get more daylight. And so, it's harder for teens to go to sleep at night, and even for adults. And then, when we wake up in the morning, it's darker. The sun hasn't risen yet, and so it's hard to wake up in the morning. And that's how it is for our teens. It's like starting school at 7:00, 6:15 now, in the dark. And so, that's more of a reason to start school later, because our teens are not getting enough sleep when they have a hard time sleeping at night and then having a hard time getting up in the morning. The three students who were here last month to speak, they broke, they spoke bravely and eloquently to ask you. The ask is that, please put on the agenda to reconsider starting school later. Why? For better academic performance. After spring break, it's harder for them to get the sleep they need. And that's when, but that's when the STAR test and all their finals and AP classes they have tests for. And so, they're struggling. And so, please consider them and consider starting school later. Thank you. And also, I want to put that HISD, Start School Later, 8:30, for middle and high schools. Deer Park starts later, 8:45, for their high schools. And Friendswood ISD, as well as Austin ISD, San Antonio ISD. Many of the high-ranking school districts start school later, and their high schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rabe. Mr. Valdez? Your time will start when you start speaking.
Okay. Hi, my name is Edward Valdez.
Hi, my name is Edro Valdez, and I'm a class of 2020 graduate of Pasadena ISD, Pasadena High School, excuse me. Especially you, Chris Davila, is, you probably know Mr. Dolan, one of our favorite Pasadena High School teachers. Especially, I see him all the time. Last week, he passed away of bone cancer. And that's why I'm here for, let's do a, like a 30-second moment of silence for our best teacher of Pasadena High School, Ms. Dolan. Okay. Thank you. And he will always be remembered beyond legacy. All right. I'm here also to speak out about daylight saving time performance, especially, my perspective is, why do we have to wake up so early, at least to be at school by 7:15? At least my perspective. I remember, like, head to the bus on our way to Pasadena High School before 10:00 class at 7:15, excuse me. It was like, I still, it's like I'm still in the dark. I feel tired. I still feel sleepy. Especially head there. My God. Especially laid down while in the bus, especially. Especially.
One minute.
One minute? Okay. Especially eat breakfast after 7:15. Still feel same, same way, especially after spring break. And until I, until I'm getting better at noon, so. Especially throughout 2:45 for ROTC drill practice, especially after I'm done with it. After school's over and practice is over, I feel tired. Still feel tired. Feel so tired, so. I remember usually after homework, I just get rest at 9:30. Head to bed at 9:30. And I wish, and I, like, nine hours, but I wish this, in the future, I wish that we, I could wake up.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Set a date for the regular meeting. We're going to set a date for the regular meetings. Suggested Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan. Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to adjourn it to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, and we will reconvene.
As well as 551.071, Mr. President, if you'd add that, please.
551.071?
In addition, yes.
In addition to, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reconvene an open session at 8:37. And we're going to adjourn at 8:38.